We do have a call, and at this time, we need a motion to approve our agenda for the night.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve and adopt the amended agenda as presented.
Sorry? Motion by Supervisor Miles, and second by Supervisor Allen, we adopt the work agenda as presented. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? All right, we got it. Seven, yes. Is that right? All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of our minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Gillum, second by Supervisor Davis, that we approve our minutes. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. The next on the agenda would be the claims. Approval of the claims?
Sorry?
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, that we approve these claims. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. The next thing is approval of our fourth quarter appropriations.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the fourth quarter appropriations be adopted as presented.
All right. Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Bryant, that the fourth quarter appropriations be approved. Are there any questions? Are you ready to vote? Seven, yes. The next be announcements. Do we have an announcements?
I have one brief one, Mr. Chairman. If you haven't seen this publication, it's called "A Day in the Life." It says Progress 2023. It was put together by the Farmville Herald, and Mr. Carter, our county administrator, is featured in here, and they did a really good job. He was actually the first person on page two or three or something like that. So I'd like to offer congratulations to him, and I hope you can read that really good story about the hard work he's doing on the board's behalf. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you. Public comments. We allow each citizen three minutes to speak in public comments. Those that are signing up, how many do we have signed up, Mr. Chairman?
We have 20.
20. We'll start at, ask the order. First one?
Frank Shawwaller, District 5.
Heads up.
Thank you.
I can hand it around if you want.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Hello, my name is Frank Shawwaller. I live in District 5. After learning about the many communities that have been prevented from protecting themselves because of corporate pressure, we felt a zoning amendment was not a viable way to protect our county. That is why we went the rights-based route. The rights-based ordinance is not a land use or zoning law. It doesn't propose regulation of metallic mining in Buckingham County. Rather, it insists we protect the rights of the people and communities here to be free of toxic trespass and to prove it safe first. It empowers you, our local elected leaders, to do just that. Through the centuries, the courts have unjustly and increasingly empowered private corporations with more and more rights originally meant for humans. Public corporations, you, our county government, have been left behind, as have we, the people. This is why we find that again and again, communities are forced to take on big, polluting, all-consuming industries. The rights-based ordinance does an end run around regulatory and corporate law. It's not a new environmental law. It's a civil rights law for all of us. The rights-based ordinance takes its authority from, number one, the Ninth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. The rights of the people are not limited to just the rights listed in the Constitution. Also, number two, the Fourteenth Amendment. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities or rights of the citizens of the United States. And also from five articles from the Virginia Constitution. Mr. Wright advised you, our elected leaders, that there was no Virginia code giving authority to the rights-based ordinance. But in Virginia code, 15.2-1102, municipalities were given, quote, "permission" and granted general powers which are necessary or desirable to secure and promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the municipality," unquote. Mr. Wright, here is Virginia law giving authority to Buckingham to pass the rights-based ordinance. Its clear intention is to protect public safety and welfare. I ask for the County Gold Mining Committee to reconvene and to discuss this, which is what we had hoped would happen. Or this Virginia code gives the rights-based ordinance the legal support you said it didn't have. So send it to a public hearing straight away and adopt it now. Thank you.
Rick Ewing with the library.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Rick Ewing, the library director for Buckingham County and Prince Edward County. And here for two reasons. One of the first is to introduce our new branch manager, Kim Westerhoff, has been with us a couple of months, and we're trying to coordinate, both of us being here, and here we are. So if you have any, you have any things, good things to say, tell me. If you have any complaints... No, seriously. If you need anything, Kim will be here, answer your questions, or anyone else's, and help them out. So I'm very, very pleased to have her join, join us. But there are the, the other reason is that a little bit later in the, in the agenda, in your agenda, you're going to be hearing from a few organizations in terms of their budget and their asks. And it's on me. I sort of missed that, but I don't really have a whole lot to say. I am asking for a small increase, and I believe you have the document that explains that. It's a, a lot of it is minimum wage in the second half of the year. Last year was six months. This year it's 12 months. So it's up a little bit, but kind of not really, because it just covers a greater time period. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to, to me on that one, and I'd be glad to, to answer any, any questions about that. So those are the two reasons for me to be up here tonight, and again, just to introduce Kim Westerhoff. Thank you very much.
Do any of the board members have a question, Barry?
Welcome, Ms. Westerhoff.
Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome aboard.
Maggie Snoddy, District 5.
Good evening. My name's Maggie Snoddy. I live at 194 Mountain View Road, Scottsville, and I'm in the Glenmore District. I have two topics I would like to discuss with the board tonight. One's kind of lighthearted. The other's a little more serious. First off, I'd like to do a little trash talking with you guys tonight. Yes, believe it or not, it's that time already. That time of year again, in the Buckingham County Anti-Litter Task Force is gearing up for our fifth semi-annual road cleanup. We're hoping for another record-breaking turnout, and I'll have more details on that at a later date. The other topic I would like to comment on is the Electoral Board issues. I want to thank those of you who have been attending the Electoral Board meetings. The question was asked at the Electoral Board meeting on Friday afternoon, why are there so many people attending these meetings? I'll tell you why. Because the people in this county do not trust this new Electoral Board. One person has already resigned. What does that say? As has been previously stated, this is not a Republican or Democratic issue. It's an issue of good government, governance, and it's about right versus wrong. I want you to know that I relayed these same concerns directly to the Electoral Board on Friday, for whatever good it did, because personally, I don't think they're listening. But I want to state my concerns directly to you, because you need to have this information as well. I have been an officer of election for 13 years, and I have talked to many of my fellow officers of election. Everyone I talked to told me that they have never worked an election like the one in November, and the reason was the intimidation of officers of election by some of the Republican observers. A strong election system has a well-trained, experienced, honest, and nonpartisan registrar, and a good balance between experienced, long-serving officers of election with newly-appointed officers of election. We have a huge election coming up this November, and we cannot afford to lose any experienced officers of election. The electoral system in Buckingham County will not hold up under that stress, and you need to know, I'm not the only one with those concerns. So I want to thank you again for your past support, and I just humbly urge each one of you, please continue to come to these Electoral Board meetings. Thank you.
Ms. Snoddy, I have got probably about three or four complaints about where they can't look over at Scottsville and cross the bridge into Buckingham. I hope you can get that area when you start to clean up. It do look kind of bad.
Wait, say that again.
Coming 20th South.
And right before you come into Scottsville?
No, not Scottsville, in Buckingham.
Oh, okay.
Cross the bridge into Buckingham.
Okay.
Did you see how that looked?
Pick a road in the county. Any road.
Yeah, what I'm saying is...
You got, you got my word. I've already sent out email from all the people that were, that participated last year. I'm working on getting new people to participate, and I actually talked to the county administrator in Scottsville, because there's all kind of trash in Scottsville. Now, that's, I mean, right, right as you leave Buckingham, heading across the bridge there. So we're, we're going to be doing great things. If, if I can take another minute, I...
I asked the question. You take the, look, I asked the question.
That's okay. I'll, I'll give you more updates later.
That's all I'm saying. I asked, your time was up. So I asked you the question. You're not, you're not violating your three minutes. I'm giving some concern what citizens said. It do look good. My suggestion to you is clean up 20 before you clean up some of the back roads. Don't a lot of people travel the back roads, like do 20. When they come into 20, that's what they say. Is this...
I agree with you.
That's all I'm saying.
We'll do it.
Right.
We'll do it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Dillaboll?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come here today. I am a Buckingham County parent that accesses the James River Boys and Girls Club services, and I want to thank you for your support of the programming in the past. And I wanted to come here tonight. I know that they're on the docket to speak, but I wanted to speak in support of your continued support of the access to those programs. When I thought about that, coming here today and talking to you, the question in my mind is, with continued support, what benefits will the children of Buckingham, as well as the families, have? I want to say, too, that this comes from, not only as a parent, but I've also been working in Buckingham County and the surrounding counties in the field of mental health with children and families for about 15 years. So I think I have a little bit of a unique perspective on accessing, access to programming. And I can say that I think that the benefits to the children that are able to access the programming at James River Boys and Girls Club have, the benefits are, you know, that they have healthy, pro-social environment by, that is supervised by authority figures that can be trusted, that they provide programming designed to develop healthy, responsible citizens. They provide opportunities for personal growth and development that may not have otherwise been accessed by these children. They have amazing ability to plan trips and excursions that give children exposure to things that they may not have seen before. And I think it gives the children an excellent opportunity to practice building healthy relationships with adults outside of their own household. As far as benefits to families, you know, I did a little research about what families experience in Buckingham County financially, and, and the surrounding counties, too. And I was a little surprised at what the median income was, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, in 2021. You know, in that research, I found that the median household income in Buckingham was, in 2021, was $49,841. And that the poverty level was 16.8%, which is only closely seconded by Prince Edward Counties, and the other counties surrounding Buckingham are higher than that, in the sense of, on a positive side. So when thinking about that, as well as the challenges that parents face in providing access to resources for their children, you know, for us, having the access to this programming has decreased our childcare costs, which, you know, when I did our income taxes this year, I did the math and found that we spent...
Thank you.
Oh, dang it, I'm done. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, I speak too much.
Bob Thomas, District 4.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I want to apologize to all the people here who are speaking about much more serious issues than mine. Mine is personal in nature. I bought a piece of property here two years ago as a family compound, kind of, you know, hunting, fishing, retreat. I've put a lot of money into trying to develop it as a trophy property. I have a, what I consider a very irresponsible neighbor, a disrespectful neighbor, who I have tried to deal with this issue with him directly and through your animal control department. His dogs run on my property, and I'm not talking one dog, I'm talking five or six dogs every day, all over my property. They bark at me when I'm in my deer stand. They bark at me when I'm fishing at my pond. So I'm simply asking that maybe you would allow your animal control people some other methods to deal with this, other than trapping them, because I've tried twice with that. It just doesn't work. That's it. Thank everyone for their indulgence of such a minor issue with everything else.
Scott, can you pass over to Doug Warren, Animal Control, to take care?
Sorry.
We'll pass it to the animal control officers to take, to take care for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mindy Zlatnik, District 5.
The zoning ordinance amendment that the supervisors have decided to move ahead with is not without risk. Even though the Virginia code gives municipalities permission to regulate mining through zoning, history shows that corporations can use the takings clause of, the takings clause based on the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution to sue or threaten to sue local governments to change their minds. Brian Carlton's excellent editorial in the Farmville Herald on February 24th quotes Aston Bay's CEO, Thomas Earlrich, saying that his company plans to continue working with local landowners, no matter what local officials do. Moreover, he continues, quote, "If the county decides to remove that right to mine, then that is a takings issue for the landowners to pursue." So what is a takings issue? The Supreme Court established the regulatory takings doctrine in the 1922 case of Pennsylvania Coal Company versus Mahone. This case is the first case in which the court declared that the Fifth Amendment mandated that corporations be compensated for the diminishment in property value resulting from the application of regulations that seek to protect the health, safety, and welfare of people and the natural environment. In other words, if Buckingham County has a zoning ordinance that results in limiting of future profits of a company, or the diminishment of property value, the county can be sued. It's not an automatic win for the corporations. The courts would have to weigh in, but the above-all-rich quote sounds like a warning or saber rattling to me. I'm interested in knowing what the county attorney says about the takings issue. Please ask him, as I am not in a position to. He has stated his concerns about the rights-based ordinance. He said, quote, "It would put the county in a difficult position if called upon to defend such an ordinance," implying the county would be sued. What does he think about counties getting sued or threatened to be sued under the takings doctrine for land use zoning amendment, which has a long history of lawsuits about, against local municipalities in just your position? After learning about the many communities that have been prevented from protecting themselves because of corporate pressure, we felt a zoning amendment would be vulnerable, and that's why we chose to create a rights-based ordinance, which is not based on zoning or regulation. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Heidi Divya Bear Two, District 5.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Wow, that went fast. Hello, my name is Heidi Divya Bear Two, and I live in District 5. You've got, you, you got very bad legal advice in the memo dated August 2nd, 2022, from Mr. Wright and Mr. Carter to the supervisors. This has distracted and delayed you from adopting the rights-based ordinance to protect us from metallic mining. You have no legal reasons to not adopt it now. The August memo was in response to our initial meeting with Mr. Carter about the proposed Buckingham metallic mining ordinance that is based on the ordinance adopted by Halifax unanimously in 2008 to ban uranium mining. The first, I quote the misleading memo, and the first one is, "The authority set forth in the town of Halifax ordinance might be categorized as a claim of right, rather than authorized and permitted by the state of Virginia, a Dillon State," end quote. The Halifax ordinance has a list of authorities, including Virginia Code Section 15.21102, which gives authority to localities to secure and promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the municipality, and the safety, health, peace, good order, comfort, et cetera. Number two cites misinformation that says, "The ordinance concerning banning the metal, the mining of metals in Buckingham County, presented by the Friends of Buckingham and Virginia Community Rights Network, is based on the same claim of right that was used by the town of Halifax." Actually, the Buckingham ordinance does not ban mining. It is carefully and intentionally not regulatory. It is rights-based and prove-it-first-based. As we said above, Code 15.21102 gives you, our leaders, authority to secure and promote the general welfare, et cetera. Another piece of bad advice reads, "We cannot recommend the Buckingham County adopt an ordinance based on this claim of right. It would put the county in a difficult position if called upon to defend such an ordinance." You just heard that. Later in the memo, it says, "Thus, it seems a little benefit, of little benefit, to adopt a parallel ordinance." Again, Virginia Code 1102 gives you the authority to adopt the rights-based ordinance. Just do it. Also, we now know, Virginia Code 15.2-2280 explicitly gives authority to localities to prohibit or ban mining. The memo reads, though, "The state does not have a prohibition against metal mining." Yikes. How else are you being misled? You have, you have sent the problem to the, the Planning Commission to create a county ban on metallic mining. You have invited industry to the table again for next Monday's work session. Do you really think industry will encourage a ban? The right, the rights-based ordinance is not a ban. It is a brilliant dodge.
Thank you.
Prove it first.
Thank you.
You represent us, not industry, right?
Cindy Marquetti, District 1.
Hi, good evening. Cindy Marquetti, District 1. I am here to talk about the rezoning of Olympia Moore wanting B1 from A1, and I'm, I'm confused, because I thought I was listening to the tape of the last planning meeting, and I thought that it was a four-to-four tie, which meant that it would not go forward to the Board of Supervisors, but here it is tonight. I'm, I'm just baffled, because another meeting, there was a tie, and it did not, it said that it wouldn't go to the planning, it wouldn't go to a hearing, public hearing, but then it did. So I don't, I don't know what the rules are. I'm not sure anybody knows what the rules are. Maybe it's, it's not good governance, but I think we need to figure out what we're doing here, and I really am not against business coming in to, but maybe that area, because I don't see how VDOT could have done a real good study if you don't even know what business is going to be there. If you don't know what the traffic patterns are going to be, how much business is going to be coming in and out, where the entrances and exits are to this place. So I don't, I don't quite get it. So maybe y'all can just really step back, look at this, and, you know, do your due diligence, and not just pass something because, you know, you think you want some business, because you don't even know what business is there. Is it going to be residential? Because that's not going to bring any money to the county. So, and then I have to, I have to take a moment to, to respond to someone who, Ms. Snoddy, who was talking about, what does it say about someone resigning from the Electoral Board, which would be my husband? And what it says is that my husband cares very deeply about his family, because personally, I was scared out of my mind because of vitriol that's going around with people in the county against the Electoral Board, before they ever got started to, to do their work and try to do something based on rumors and this and that and the other. And, you know, social media is a very powerful tool. My daughter was scared to even, to even have her daughter be cared for in her church. So, I mean, it's, it's just crazy, and that kind of stuff needs to stop.
Thank you.
Teresa McManus, District 2.
Never listened to me before. You're not going to listen to me tonight. I've read to you the Declaration. I've read to you the Declaration of this state. I'm going to now explain to you the first two paragraphs. One, "Rights are given to us by God, not you. The purpose of civil government is to serve my rights, not yours. You lost them when you became a board member. The power of the civil government is given by the consent of the governed, these people and me, each who is fully entitled to rule." Let's talk about the three most important things in this county to me are the three boards. This board, the Electoral Board, and the Planning Commission. Just get rid of the Planning Commission, because you don't pay any attention to what they do. When they do do something, you throw it out the window. So just get rid of them, because they don't matter to you. The Electoral Board. We have people on this board who are inciting riots. We have people in this audience who have never read the full law. Some of you have been given the full law and know what is truly happening with the Electoral Board, and how since 2011, one law in particular has never been followed in this county. Board, and how since 2011, one law in particular has never been followed in this county. That's all I'll say there. But I will say to you, Mr. Miles, you should be ashamed of yourself. You are sitting up here. Did you listen to the whole hour and 45 minutes of that conversation that you posted, only 59 seconds of? So have any of you held a supervisory position anywhere? If you had, your interviewer would say to you, "Can you fire someone if you find that they have done something wrong?" That's in every job interview that you would go to. Let's talk about the Board of Supervisors. You don't follow the law. You don't listen to your constituents. The Atlantic Investment Corporation, Jordan Miles's baby. If you had followed State Statute 15.2734 and State Statute 15.2-1802, you wouldn't be in the mess where you had to sell it back. And I hope the people of Buckingham know they have $170,000 extra that they get to pay back because of your mistake, not ours, your mistake. So you not only bought it back, you bought it back for $170,000, folks, that you get to pay because of their mistake. I hope you're ashamed of yourself, because I am, and rumors. You promised me something tonight.
Look, I told you if I said anything to defend you, I would apologize, but the more I get out in search, I, I gotta sit down and talk to you. We, we got some conf, I'm not gonna apologize to you, because you came up and cursed me and then...
When did I curse you? When did I curse you? I came up and I defended you and said you did not owe this county anything. You should be defending me.
Let me tell you something.
Because you know I never said what he said. You know I never once said anything about a black child. I said any child in the community, not every child. You, who I defended all along, you should blow this rumor out, because it's you he's talking about.
Your time, your time is up.
My time is up.
Yes.
David Spears, District Seven.
When, when people come up and talk, why don't you respect people the same way they respect you? And you, and you, and you need to get yourself together, Ms. McMahon, because you're the only one coming act like that. And then, I, I gotta...
I can't help it, bro.
Ms. McMahon, I got a tape I'd like for the, you to listen to, what some of your members of the Republican Party said. They'd be glad you leave the county, because you messing up the Republican Party. Do you want to go back and listen to that tonight?
This is not the time or the place.
Not, well, she, she, look here. It's not the time to...
It's not the time.
You don't have the time, look, you shut up. I'm not talking to you.
Oh.
It's not time for you. She came up here and blast the supervisors. I got a right to defend ourselves.
That is all the comments are going.
Right.
That is my right as a citizen. Isn't that...
It's my right as a supervisor to speak too. You come up and, and run people down and criticize people, and you, they don't have the right to defend themselves? That's what the problem is now. There's too much animosity in Buckingham throwing stones. I hear a lot of rumor about two people sitting back there, Mel Taylor and Chevy Taylor, two of the finest people in Buckingham County. I got a lot of respect for how you run their, run their name and family there. Y'all need to stop it, and you know who you are too. I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Spears. I'm a geoscientist with over 40 years of experience in government and industry. I recently served on the State Agency Committee that studied the potential impacts of gold mining. I'm also a resident of Buckingham County, District Seven. Mr. Allen, hello, Danny, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
My wife and I have lived in Buckingham County for 32 years. All three of my children have graduated from Buckingham High School. We love it here. We came here for the rural beauty of Buckingham, but we also recognize that industry has been an essential part of the rural landscape since the earliest days of colonial settlement. From the flour mills and saw mills of the 18th century to the railroads and the mines of the 19th century, to the pipelines and the power lines and the power plants of the 20th century, industry has coexisted here with agriculture and rural living. Our modern way of life could not exist without these industrial facilities here, here in the rural area. Now, our nation is in the middle of a great transition to more sustainable forms of energy. We see more electric cars on the road. We see solar panels popping up all around us. We're about to see wind turbines off the coast of Virginia Beach, and this energy transition is creating a powerful demand for metals, such as lithium and nickel for batteries, the rare earth elements for solar panels, and copper for transmission lines. Our hunger for modern electronics is also increasing the demand for metals. To manufacture a typical smartphone, and how many smartphones are in the room tonight, requires over 60 different kinds of metals for one smartphone. Some people in this county now want to ban metal mining. This is a terrible mistake. We're on the verge of a great shortage of the metals we need to sustain our modern way of life. Many of these metals are currently supplied by Russia, or China, or third world countries in Africa. Those sources can be considered risky at best. Furthermore, when we rely on foreign sources, we import the raw materials, but we export the impacts of those industries to countries that may be poorly positioned to handle those impacts. The proposed ban on metal mining reflects a 1970s mentality, one in which if you don't like an industry, you just try to stop it regardless of the ways in which your own consumption contributes to the demand for the products. There isn't a person in this room who didn't wake up this morning and immediately contribute to the demand for metals. When you use electricity, drive a car, change your thermostat, or stir your coffee, you are benefiting from industrial metals. To those who want to implement this mining ban, I say try going a single day without using any metals and see how your life changes. Whether you like it or not, we all need the metal mining industry. What we need is a new form of environmentalism, one in which you are responsible for the impacts of our own consumption. Many of us recognize the benefits of consuming locally grown food and purchasing locally grown products. I say the same reasoning should apply to the metals we consume every day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joyce Gooden, District Six.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was, I'm Joyce Gooden, and I'm from District Six, 1779 Shelton Store Road. Thank you first to the Board of Supervisors. I was really excited when I saw the construction in front of the Ag Building where you're repairing the sidewalk. I sincerely hope you are putting in the handicap ramp, so it will make it so much easier for those of us who have disabilities to get it into the Ag Building and not having as far to walk. So a great thank you for that. I also want to do a shout out and a thank you to our former Deputy, Deputy Registrar, Ms. Rebecca Raglan Kelly, who was an awesome fit for our Electoral Registars Office, but had to leave her position. And I want to say, we should be trying to keep young people in the community and not run them out of the community. So she was just awesome fit and knowledgeable, and so Buckingham has truly lost an individual that was serving the county well. A third thing I want to point out, that Saturday, April the 1st, it will have our Dr. Carnegie Woodson Celebration at Historic Village at Lee Wayside. Last year, the board did a resolution to observe Dr. Carnegie Woodson Day. So Saturday, April the 1st, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Our rain date is April the 8th. Last year, we had over 400 people come out to this event. It was an awesome event, and it, it looks to be better this year. Our motto this year is educate, unite, and prosper together. It is family fun day with great food, live music, games, exhibits, and vendors. The food was wonderful last year, I have to say that. There is no admission charge for this event, and the sponsors, our Buckingham Unity Action Team, Historic Buckingham Incorporated, Buckingham Branch NAACP, the African American, Buckingham African American Life and History Society, Straight Street and Forward 2020. For more information, 434-218-2576. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Chenakis, District Five.
We are at the crossroads of either strengthening our duty to protect Buckingham's democratic agencies, which serve us all, or submitting to extremists impaneled as the Governor's Party. Patriot partners with our registrars built one of Virginia's finest elections network, secure for 30 years. Power brokers loaded with dark money strategize hammering into rubble our legacy elections office. Plans reopen with coached loyalists who will serve only their party supporters while begrudging against our entire community. Protection of everyone's vote in secure elections is profoundly sacred. We, genuine patriots, must overcome our collective moral outrage and experience pain to power, pain to power. Assaults upon our election agency shuttering the office of the people's will are severe body blows. Expect assaults on every candidate who is not a devotee of the Governor's Party. America's lawyers' honor and duty is to protect the republic's rule of law. Justice departments enshrine the durability of the people's agencies. Prosecutors Beasley and Wright, with son of distinguished judge Attorney Snoddy, must publicly alert all local members of the Virginia bar. Remember, you, the people's advocates, are the foremost enemies of anti-democratic politicians. We need the public forum to radiate our shared guiding principles. Resilient, we will not live in the rubble. Captives of predators and bullies. Protect the peace.
Thank you.
Dolores Green, District One.
I'm Dolores Green from District One in Arvonia. I come before you this evening in support of Olympia Moore's request to have her property zoned from A1 to B1. It is my understanding that the request for Olympia Moore to rezone her property, it does align with the Buckingham County Comprehensive Plan. Regarding businesses, businesses currently in the area, the Dollar General store is located on this same corridor and has been open for a year or so. I believe also that a Family Dollar store was approved last year to be located next to the Central Virginia Community Health Center. Again, same business corridor. I would think that it is easier to attract future businesses if the property is already zoned commercial. We would adhere to the list that shows the type of businesses the county approves of. We will, we would be remiss in not doing so. I often hear that Buckingham County forgets about the rest of the county sometimes when it comes to planning. This would include the Arvonia and New Canton area as well. Also, as I have stated before, Mr. Jeffries owns a business directly across the road from the proposed business site for Ms. Moore, and his business is the Shed Service Station. And he simply cannot understand what the delay is all about in getting this rezoned. It's already in a business area, and there have been in the past different types of businesses in that area. I've never known the Planning Commission to deny a public hearing before, but they did earlier for Ms. Moore. The residents also have the right to voice their opinion, whether it's yea or nay. There are other businesses in that area and have been through the years. I'm hoping that the Board of Supervisors will be favorable in granting her requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Johnson, District One.
My name is Lisa Johnson, and I too live in the Arvonia-New Canton area, and I am here also to show support for Tammy Olympia Moore in her support of having the land rezoned to commercial. I've been in Arvonia now for over 20 years, and after Jack's and Cactus Jack closed, we have no form of a restaurant or anywhere to go for entertainment on that end of the county. We either have to take our, take our money and spend it in Flu Vanna, Zion's Crossroads, Gordonsville, all of those places, because they're actually closer for us to get to than to come back to Dillwood. And people, when they come to visit from out of the state, that's the first thing that they will say, "There's nothing here on this end of the county for us to do. We don't even have a decent restaurant or anywhere to go." And I feel like if we were able to get this land rezoned, that would open up the opportunity for that type of business to come in that area. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Kendah Honeman, District Five.
Kendah Honeman from Supervisor Bryant's District Five. At the Planning Commission meeting, Guy Dixon, the Kionite Mining Chairman, was speaking. He referenced the gold mining-related zoning rule changes and possible outright ban. I don't know who of you were there to have heard that, but he specifically cited their economic role in our little corner of the world, recommending your diligence in regarding the economic and employment effect on the county. I looked it up. Kionite has 96 parcels of land in the county comprising 4,000 acres. Quite a sizable investment, obviously. The Booker Mine Complex is in that neighborhood. There's been a lot of attention to that, and I'm told that Blue Rock owns that property that, as I understand, is connected to the Kionite mining. Well, there's a question about metallic versus mineral mining. Kionite is a mineral. It's not a metal. I was on the State Agency Committee with Supervisor Bryant and David Spears. Didn't know you'd be here tonight. You're in my comments, David. Gold is both a mineral and a metal. Kionite is only a mineral, and it is a blue rock, so I guess there's a reason that that corporation is named as it is. Forty-three minutes into our ninth State Agency Committee meeting in September, David Spears speaks on metal and says Kionite's not a metal, although on a technicality, Kionite is sometimes considered a metal due to its being an aluminum silicate. For regulatory purposes, the federal government sometimes considers Kionite to be a metal. But for right now, gold is the only metal mined here. He goes on to speak of other metals, the copper, lead, and zinc, which he mentioned tonight about the critical minerals, which Aston Bay says it's looking for now. Aston Bay did a presentation on its website March of 2023, saying there's an additional 532 prospective acres recently added along the strike to the southeast. Think the Booker Mine Area. They say timber's recently harvested, soil sampling, panning, and prospecting is underway. They expect to be doing drilling, down dip, and in the southeast extension. So I hope that you will be diligent and cautious as you consider how to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Watso, District Four. Julia Gibson, District Five.
My name's Julia Gibson. I live in District Five. We persist in asking you to stop metallic mining from coming to Buckingham by passing the proposed rights-based ordinance. One of the numerous sensible key protections in that document is the "prove it first" section. This requires the applying industry to simply first show proof before getting any permits of another mining project of similar scope that has caused no harm to that community. This simple and effective requirement was adopted into state law by Wisconsin in ninety-eight and held for twenty years. The legislation was passed by overwhelming bipartisan margins, twenty-seven to six in the Senate and ninety-one to six in the Assembly. More than sixty organizations supported the legislation, along with petitions signed by more than forty thousand residents. While it was law, not one mining company applied for permits. Thus, it was a solidly effective roadblock. And it took hundreds of thousands of industry dollars and energy to take that law down with the help of industry-friendly politicians. This law was directed at copper sulfide mines, which are the largest source of taxpayer liability under the EPA Superfund Cleanup Program. It was this track record of sulfide mining pollution that prompted a massive grassroots environmental sport fishing and tribal movement to successfully oppose Exxon's metallic sulfide mine at the headwaters of the Wolf River and enact Wisconsin's landmark mining moratorium law known as "prove it first." I thank Professor Al Geddix of the University of Wisconsin for this information and his work to help create the "prove it first" law. Renowned biophysicist Steve Emmerman, who also participated in the creation of the law and informed us to it, also reviewed and approved the Buckingham proposed rights-based ordinance for scientific and general correctness. He presented to the State Assembly, the State Agency Committee, on the study of the impacts of gold mining in Virginia. We have asked Chairman Bickford to invite Dr. Emmerman to the Planning Commission work meetings on metallic mining to advise on the scientific questions in "prove it first." The rights-based ordinance is a gift, a collaboration by many clear-thinking concerned people. Please take it to truly protect our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Godschalk, District Five.
Hello. My name is Chris Godschalk. I own land in District Five. I'd like to start out by saying that we are thrilled that you are looking at banning all metallic mining and not just gold. It shows true planning and acknowledgement of the risk we would take to limit any solution to just gold. Now, I turn to the Takings Clause. We understand that the Takings Clause is a way that corporations can pressure counties to change their zoning laws to favor the needs of corporations. If counties resist, they are sued under the Takings Clause, which is derived from a court interpretation of the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Based on a nineteen-twenty-two decision that stated, "A corporation would be compensated for the diminishment in property value, as in loss of future profits resulting from the application of regulations seeking to protect the health, safety, and welfare of people and the natural environment." The Virginia Code gives the counties permissions to prohibit mining, but corporations have been given rights by the court that trample on our rights to protect our water, air, and land. This is not fair, and this is why we support the rights-based ordinance. I would like to ask Mr. Wright what he thinks about the Takings Clause and is justice served for our community. Thank you.
Marie Flowers, District Three.
Marie Flowers, District Three. I'd like to say that I think David Spears had a lot of good points to his little speech, but I still think that the environment should be the first concern of everybody. You know, what good is the cell phone going to be if your water's poisoned? I think you all need to think of the people first. That's why I think the "prove it first" might be the answer. It doesn't ban the mining, but it just prove it first. And also, I'm disturbed about what's going on at the Election Board. The Election Board is not going to rehire the registrar. And I think there's some evil behind that. I think maybe they're going to try to disenfranchise people. I do not know what the capacity of the board is. But they don't want to rehire a good person who's done a good job for all these years. And I also want to thank you all who have been to the meetings, who care about what's going on. And I hope that you all will go to that meeting about the mining on the twentieth with the Planning Commission. You got to know, I don't know how you can not know a lot unless you go there and you hear it for yourself. But I'm just, and I'm also very disturbed, and I just said that and I'm going to say it again, about the Election Board. We do not need to have that kind of conflict. If the registrar had done anything wrong, they should sit down with her and tell her, and that could be worked out. And Jordan, I liked what you wrote, and thank you all.
Todd Jamerson, District Two.
My name is Todd Jamerson. I live in District Two. My name is Todd Jamerson. I live at District Two. Thank you, gentlemen of the board. What I'm here to discuss about, and I was told to bring it towards the board, was the Apex. I'm sure y'all may have heard of this. The Apex solar panels went down on sixty. I just had some questions. If you could indulge me for a minute. Out of those, all of these solar panels, I'm sure some of y'all have been aware and drove by and all that. There's a lot of solar panels there, guys. What kind of batteries are in them? What does that mean to the community? And what does that mean to the health of the people in that community? Because I live in that community. I just wanted to know, a quick question or a quick answer, if you were able to, or if I need to wait and maybe talk to my supervisor and get the answer. I'm more than willing to do that, but I would like to have a good, straight, honest answer about that, because that's, that concerns me a little bit.
Do any board member know what kind of batteries in them? I got the slightest idea. I'm sorry, I don't know.
But Mr. Chairman, that's the Dominion on sixty east. Is that what you're talking about, sir? Yeah, that's the Dominion project.
Is that, is that Apex or is Dominion?
But still, but still, that's.
Okay, my bad. Sorry about that.
The solar panels, most time, don't have batteries. Now, if you put one at your house on the roof, they put one in your basement. They put a battery in that. And lately, I've heard some bad stuff about that type of battery.
That's what I've heard.
Smoke open and blow up real easy. If you charge too much. Anyway, as far as the solar panels are here in the open, they don't have no batteries because they can't charge up. I mean, it's too much energy. They just use what they use during the day.
So it goes directly into the grid?
Right.
From where they are right now? Is that being sufficient? Is that working correctly? Is that helping out our community?
This last solar panel that we just approved actually goes back into the community. A certain percentage of it comes back into the community. And you asked a question about what happens with getting rid of the panels and whatnot. The company actually gets rid of the panels and just say if we said the company was broke or gone out of business, which is a big question that most constituents would have, what happens when this company's gone? They have a bond. They put the money up at the beginning, and it's a bond that takes care of it and covers the cost if they're not in business or something. Is that right, Supervisor Miles?
That's my understanding. And if it was, and, right, it's called a decommissioning bond. And Mr. Chairman, if it was like the Apex one, which is up in, to the north part of the county, there were no harsh, there are no harsh chemicals in the panels.
Okay, but one real quick question before I run out of time here. Apologize for that, but one real quick question. Has there ever been any health issues due to these panels?
Pretty many things.
There have never been any, because I live close by there. I just wanted to know.
Like, physical health to a person?
Physical health problems. Has anybody ever had any physical health problems due to that?
I have one person who had trouble with the heart. We never did find, never did, could come up with any real answers. We had people look into it real deep.
Okay, so.
Right, face maker.
Okay, so that we, so y'all have, if something came up, y'all be able to look into it and give us a good, straight answer. Good, thank y'all for your time.
Something legitimate came up.
Okay, something legitimate. Well, if I bring it to the board, I want it to be legitimate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
That is all.
That's all. Okay. We now move on down, we took care of the VDOT matters, and move down to presentations. Ms. Ruth Wallace.
And Carl is hooking up the presentation now. I have also with me Ms. Jennifer Ligon, who is our A and R, Agent Agriculture and Natural Resources at the Extension Office. I'm Ruth Wallace. I'm the 4-H agent and unit coordinator. Okay, I'm Ruth Wallace. I'm the 4-H agent and unit coordinator. So today, we are coming before you, and you can move the slide, with three things. We want to do an overview of what we do, what we've been doing, how we serve our community, follow-up on our request from last month for a representative to our Extension Leadership Council. I apologize, I wasn't able to be here last month, but can answer any of your questions tonight. And then want to speak very quickly about our requested budget increase in our budget as well. Okay? Jennifer is going to start and talk about what we do on the ag side, but I do want to point out that I don't have anything in this presentation about family and nutrition program, family and consumer sciences. We have a vacant family nutrition program position that is a hundred percent grant-funded through federal grant funds and works primarily to work with low-income families and individuals on making nutritious meal choices and ones that are financially feasible. So I'm not addressing that tonight because that position is vacant.
Okay, hello. So in the agricultural realm of Virginia Cooperative Extension, we've done a lot of women in agricultural programming, and that has to deal with not only cattle, but also with women operating and management of equipment. Next slide. Also, I do a lot with cattle handling clinics and beef quality assurance, as I work closely with the cattlemen's associations in Buckingham and also in surrounding areas. We've done many programming that's also been nationally televised. We work closely together with other agents to bring tobacco grant funding to the area. I assisted the Virginia Cattlemen's in obtaining a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand grant to help with local processing in Virginia, also with other cattlemen's associations to help their cattle sales. We brought fifteen thousand directly to Buckingham producers for hay barns, precision ag equipment, and cattle handling equipment. That also generated ninety-seven thousand dollars in this local economy. We saved Buckingham producers a lot of money in artificial insemination schools and offer pesticide recertification classes. Next slide. And we're working with the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association. The Buckingham Barn Beef Hub expansion brought three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars from the Tobacco Commission directly to Buckingham. And as you see in the pictures, that's a refrigerator-freezer combination and a refrigerated trailer to increase the people in our area finishing cattle so that we can provide local beef to the community. Also, the feeder calf, the BCA's feeder calf sale brings in about two-point-three million dollars, and that contains two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars that are premiums that our local producers get for marketing their cattle this way and not just taking them to the livestock market. So that's added income in this area as well. As the heifer sale brings in around a hundred-and-fifty thousand, we have some of the best genetics around because of the AI program where we artificially breed two, over two thousand cows and heifers in the area. And recently, I was able to take a visit to the Canadian Feeder Cattle Association Annual Meeting to increase marketing options across the U.S. border for our local cattlemen. We've already sent a couple loads to Canada, the Canadian feedlots, so we're just trying to increase that as well.
Okay, next slide. I forgot to mention also, we're only hitting the highlights. She does a whole lot more than what she just talked about, too. But I'm in charge of our 4-H program here in Buckingham. We also have a 4-H program assistant. And I just put some figures up here on this screen. Last year, we had over fifteen hundred 4-H members involved in the program in one aspect or another. Of course, some are more dedicated than others. But that also, we had fifty, fifty-three adult volunteers who have gone through the training and the background checks and everything else required, and eighteen teen leaders who help with different programs and leadership roles. I'm not going through all the rest of it, but suffice it to say, we offer a lot of programming for the youth of Buckingham County. Two things I do want to highlight, in the summer, we're very active with camping programs. Junior 4-H camp is one of my favorite programs in terms of the impact it makes, but it's also one of the most stressful programs of my job. But we bring a good amount of campers from Buckingham County out to Holiday Lake and really make a significant impact in their lives while they're there. Day camps do the same thing, but not quite as grand scale as the intensive nature of programming of junior 4-H camp. Next slide. And these are just a list of some of the other programs that we do offer, just the highlights. Next slide. Above all, 4-H is a context where youth can find belonging, they can find developmental relationships with peers and with adults, they can find a place where they can fuel what sparks them, what gets them excited, and they can learn and grow many life skills. Now, following up on our request from last month for the Extension Leadership Council, you've heard a lot about what we do. What we do is to meet the needs of the citizens of Buckingham County. We try to gear all of our educational programming to what the community needs, what we can do to help citizens improve their lives. Part of that, we had a very vibrant Extension Leadership Council before COVID. During COVID, it kind of died away, and we never really resurrected it. We're trying to get that back. And with that, we would like for you, as a board, to appoint someone. It could be a board member, it could be a county employee, it could be just a general citizenry, but someone to represent Buckingham County on our Extension Leadership Council. The purpose of that council is to have an ear to the ground, to be able to listen to what's going on in the community and what the needs are that Extension may not, may be able to address. We can address everything, but we can address a lot. This person, back up just a moment if you don't mind, Carl. This person would serve a three-year term. We have three meetings per year. We do them at lunchtime, so we can do a working lunch meeting, and we feed you, and they just help us understand the community needs. And then my last slide deals with our budget increase. This past year, we did a salary compression study. Well, we didn't do it. Virginia Tech did a salary compression study looking at salaries for educators in similar roles within the education system, within other extension systems in the South and realized that we were grossly under, underpaid, underfunded. And so that has led to an increase in base salaries. So our budget that we submitted this year is a significant increase, but that is our new baseline budget with nothing else added, no anticipated raises, no nothing. That is our new current baseline figure for your share of Virginia Cooperative Extension funding here in Buckingham. And that's roughly 30% of our funding. The rest of it comes from state and federal and grant funding. And if you have any further questions, you can feel free to contact me and I'll follow up. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Amanda Jones.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Jones and I'm here on behalf of the James River Boys and Girls Club. And I brought my colleague, James Compton, with me in case I can't answer any of your questions. We are here tonight to say thank you. You helped an enormous amount of children in, from Buckingham County with the ability to attend some of our excellent programming. So we are here to say thank you. I'll give you a little recap and update of what's going on at the club. Thank you for your support from last year. Your support is an investment in our club and a growing partnership between the community and the club. So thank you. Your support reflects the investment in our young people and helping all kids develop long-term success. Little bit of information about our club. Thanks to the county's support and our community, the investment in the young people, it's been a very successful year at our club. We serve over 70 kids per day. We call them club members. And during the summer, that number reaches around 100. Each day after school, we serve 14 kids from Buckingham County and 20 during the summer. That's 20% of our club membership is coming from Buckingham County. We know this number could be much higher with more transportation. We've had some transportation issues in the past. And we had a very generous donor that heard of the Buckingham County problem and donated a bus for Buckingham County students to the James River Boys and Girls Club. It only holds 14 students though, so therefore we have a 14-person max right now. But a waiting list of Buckingham County kids that would like to attend the James River Club on a daily basis. So transportation is our barrier at this point. Some of our program highlights is last July, the James River Club competed in the Boys and Girls Club of Central Virginia's Organization-wide STEM Olympics, and we took home the gold medal. We had the mayor of Scottsville, who was one of our volunteer judges. So we are very thankful to the mayor of Scottsville for helping with that. In October, the James River Club's Financial Literacy Program won Program of the Year for the Virginia Washington DC Area Council. Our Summer Reading Program, we had 90% of the 36 summer reading participants at the James River Club maintained or improved their reading levels. So very proud of those students. We are here, oh, I actually, I would like to echo our club member's parent, Amanda, who spoke so eloquently earlier. So what we provide is amazing program to youth for citizenship and development. And we provide it at a rate of 15 to $35 per club member, per child, per, for the family in order to receive this after-school programming and summer programming for kids, all-day programming during the summer. The actual cost of serving each child is about $2,000. It was much higher during COVID. Those numbers are coming down because of safety factors have decreased or cleaning factors have decreased. So what we provide is excellent childcare services after school and all day during the summer for families in Buckingham and the surrounding counties who need us most. So we, again, thank you for your support of last year and hoping that you will continue and think of us in your budget going forward for this year. Your county's support also reflects an investment in the club's programs like STEM, arts, financial literacy, summer, summer reading, healthy cooking, and other enrichment activities that provoke our priority outcomes and academic success for healthy lifestyles and good character and citizenship. So thanks to you, we have had a very successful year. And we just wanted to come and give you an update on the club to tell you thank you. But we do have a transportation problem, so we would love your help in terms of getting more of your kids to our club on a daily basis, if at all. Thank you.
Thank you. About having a question for Ms. Wallace.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wallace, what kind of question?
Could you further describe the transportation issue? It sounds like you all have a 14-passenger bus, but it sounds like you need more capacity, just reasonably the lines maybe.
Historically, Buckingham County and the surrounding counties, the school buses would bring the kids to the club after school every day. I don't know exactly what happened in Buckingham County a couple of years ago. This was before COVID. And that transportation stopped. I don't know if it was lack of bus drivers or school route or what happened. But the kids from Buckingham County were unable to attend the club after school during the school year. So we did everything that we could on our end. We do have a couple of small buses. We would bring the bus out to the Buckingham County schools, pick up the kids. We did have a very generous donor that heard of this transportation issue and gave us a bus called the Wright Bus, W-R-I-G-H-T, specifically for transporting kids from Buckingham County to James River every day. So we are very grateful to him and would love to have the school bus or the school system reinstate bringing even more kids from Buckingham County to the James River Club every day. But we can only seat 14 safely in the bus at this point. So any help with that would be greatly appreciated.
We're bringing up a budget, work session, try to help, get some help by you. Matthew said a question.
Mr. Carter, I know we've worked in the past with the school system on providing transportation. I can't remember what the deal was a couple of years ago, but, you know, every once in a while, they get a surplus bus that they're giving back to the county or some type of vehicle. Maybe we could contact them to see if we could work with them on getting you some.
Thank you so much. We would really appreciate any help or just the conversation.
And I think, Mr. Matthews, it wasn't the actual bus that problem. I think she's right. I think they were having a shortage of bus drivers. So they couldn't find anybody to drive the bus over there after hours. That was the issue I think they were running into, as most localities are having that issue. But we'll reach out to the school division and see if they can help us with that.
That would be terrific. And we've already submitted all of our budget proposal and information to you. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to the budget presentation. Jaunt? Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Ted Reek. I'm CEO of Jaunt. Thank you for letting me have some time of your time tonight to discuss our budget request. I'd like to.
Leave the presentation up. I do have some excess buses if you want to buy any. They're going to be auctioned off, so it might be cheap, so. I want to give you some context about how John operates, and I'm sorry if this gets into the weeds a little bit. But it'll give you some sense as to why our budget request is what it is. We serve a seven-county area. Five jurisdictions are actually part of our corporate structure. Buckingham and Green County are served by us, but are not stockholders at this time. Next slide. John has a long history and quite a bit of resources that we have used to sustain a seven-county transportation system. We have vehicles, we have a facility, we have IT, call center. All of these things are used collectively by our funding partners. Next slide. And therefore, they're shared resources that we try to equitably distribute among our partners based on the services we provide there. Next slide. John has been in the last 12 months, 16 months that I've been there, trying to adopt a more transparent, equitable process for funding our services. In the past, not always quite straightforward. Today, we're trying to be a lot more clear about how we charge communities for services. What a community pays, what we call the local share, what Buckingham pays, is really the cost of service after we deduct federal and state resources. What's left over is what we ask the communities to make up. We have a three-to-one margin in in services for every dollar the county puts in. There are $3 in services that are being rendered. We have both operating and capital costs associated with our request to the county. Next slide. We provide two basic services for the county. They're commuter services. They take workers from the county mainly to UVA. We charge no fare for our services, so whatever the people make in their jobs at UVA, they're able to keep, keep it and use it for either discretionary or necessities here back in the county. So we think it's a pretty good deal, we hope, to get people to jobs. The other service we provide is very similar. There's some very minor differences with the other route. Next slide. We hope to combine these routes really and make it one service instead of two separate ones. Therefore, we're able to simplify the route and make it more effective in serving the population that goes to UVA. Next slide. The way we, and this is going to get a little bit nerdy here, but the way we figure out our costs is we determine how much service we're going to provide in each community. And this is illustrative of the different service levels we provided over the last few years to our different funding partners. The biggest one is Albemarle County. Right next to it, to the right, is what we provide Buckingham. And the other communities progress further to the right. And our costs are based on hours, and then next slide, also on miles. Fuel and maintenance are miles driven. Bus operator wages are hours driven. Next slide. This is getting really in the weeds here. So we take our hours and miles, we figure out what our costs are, we allocate those based on those variables to different communities to arrive at our, our total cost. Next slide. And we deduct from that costs our federal and state revenues. And then what's left over is what we ask the communities to provide. Next slide. If we spend more than we think we, our operations costs, then we have a deficit, which we try to manage with that. Fuel costs, as you might imagine, can be very volatile, somewhat unpredictable, but we try to estimate that as best we can. If we underspend our budget, then we have a surplus. And those funds have typically been banked. With COVID funding, the last couple of years, we actually ran some surpluses, which will actually be good news for Buckingham County that I'll mention in a few minutes. For FY '24, which is our funding request, federal funds usually cover half the cost of services. That's kind of the, the norm. And then we use state funds. We distribute state funds based on the proportional share of costs of each community. In the case of Buckingham, you represent about 2.8% of our operating costs, and therefore you get 2.8% of our state funding. Next slide. In the past, between COVID money and past practices, Buckingham County has actually gotten a higher share of federal and state funds. And having a higher share of federal and state funds lowered how much you actually contributed. And in fact, Buckingham County got a higher share of those funds than the average Jaunt community. And this is not blaming Buckingham. I'm not even sure if you were aware of that. Other communities were also benefiting to the detriment of others. Our goal is to try to normalize things, make sure everyone's on the same, on the same footing. Next slide. In doing that, it creates a financially challenging picture for the county. The true cost of services is around 125,000. That's the local portion. This year, you're paying less than around 40,000, which is not the true cost of services. Federal and state funds were allocated in such a way that it benefited the county at the expense of other issues. Again, the county, I don't believe, asked for that. It's just how, how it was done. Our goal today is to make sure everyone is on an equal footing and have a transparent process for allocating costs and funds. However, there's some good news. Next slide. Just last week, our shareholders who represent the five counties I mentioned earlier have voted to distribute surplus funds. You heard that I, we ran some surpluses in the last couple of years, mainly because of COVID funding and other factors, to the tune of about 1.25 million system-wide. Of that, Buckingham would receive almost $30,000, which we would apply as a one-time fix. And then UVA is also making money available to help communities out as well. And we'll be allocating $35,000 of that funding to the county as well. So instead of paying 125,000, your net cost will be around $61,000. It's still significantly higher than this year, but it, hopefully, it's a little bit more manageable than the 125,000. Next year, we don't anticipate a surplus to be distributed. Hopefully, UVA will continue to fund services. But at least to give you an opportunity between now and next year to see how we might rationalize services and budgetary expenses. So I wanted to pause at that particular point. And hopefully, you're able to see your way to fund the services, given these discounts that we want to be able to provide to the county. We think the services is very much needed. It is an employment source, keeps people not only employed, but they bring the money back to the county to spend not only on necessities, but also on discretionary funding as well that we all need. Thank you. Take any questions if you have any.
And the board, have any questions for the gentleman?
If I could ask a quick question, Mr. Chairman of the gentleman. Do you all apply for federal transit administration, state and federal 5310 money?
Not 5310. That's usually for nonprofits. So we don't apply for that. The funding available is pretty short. But we do apply for other funding, 5311.
Sure.
And then we also get a little bit of urban federal money through the city of Charlottesville as well.
And then my second question, Mr. Chairman, would be if you all were to combine these two routes that go up to UVA, would you, you would obviously see a savings, and is that reflected in your budget request or not?
It really wouldn't be savings. We're just cutting out some miles and reallocating them to the areas that are heavily used. So like, for example, we don't pick up very many people west of Dilwin. And then in the northern end, we don't pick up anybody north of the Camp of the Grounds. So instead, we'll allocate the service to Martha Jefferson area, Pantops, and then starting in Dilwin. So that kind of balances it out, but we think it gives people more choices and a less confusing service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
General Board, we got any questions? Thank you, sir. Flipping Corporation?
Afternoon, Board. Thank you for allowing us to speak. This is McKenna Dunbar. She's with the Sierra Club Foundation, a national organization and one of our partner organizations. I am Ray Elliott, co-founder and executive director of Flipping. We are a workforce training development organization, and we specialize in training individuals that are underrepresented and disadvantaged in solar panel installation training. We have recently become NAPSAP certified, which is the North American Board of Certified Energy Practitioners. It's a national accreditation. And we are also a NAPSAP-approved registered training provider, meaning we can train locally here in Buckingham, the workforce, and we can also. can also certify eligibility for the exams. What that means for Buckingham County is we are able to focus on training the youth. We are able to train formerly incarcerated individuals. We're also able to train women and also minorities as well in this training. Training with Flipping offers validation of knowledge nationwide with upward mobility potential, meaning we're not training just wrench turners or utility scale workers. We're training workers that can be project managers coming from Buckingham County. We're training workers that can also become construction managers from Buckingham County, and we're also training workers that can do analysis and implementation and site investigation from Buckingham County. So there's plenty of upward mobility for this, as well as energy managers. Our training meets national diversity, equity, and inclusion and accessibility requirements, which we all know by 2030, the state of Virginia will need to meet these requirements. We are nationally an industry-recognized quality training provider, and we provide skilled worker pipeline for renewable energy industry. I'm going to also focus on how accelerated and compressed our training is. It's 40 hours, five eight-hour days. We focus on hands-on training, residential, commercial, as well as utility scale. So what you guys see on 60th or north of Buckingham County, that's utility scale. Residential is what you see on, of course, on residential homes. So we train for each level of training. We also provide, our cost that we ask for at the budget request is $40,000. This covers four trainings for the year. It also covers the instructor, the books, the study guides, and also the exam fees and further incidentals for our participants. I'm going to pause right here, and I'm going to let McKenna focus on how we partner, and then I'll come back and give y'all what you really want to hear, is how can it help Buckingham County specifically, and what our reach or impact will be.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the introduction. My name is McKenna Dunbar with Sierra Club. I'm the building electrification lead based in Virginia, and I just wanted to speak a little bit on the concept of building electrification. And for those in the audience who aren't sure what that means, and it refers to the shift away from fossil fuel-powered systems and appliances into being powered by renewable energy-based sources. And the importance of that, the nexus of building electrification and green workforce development that Flipping is engaging in, really centers on the clean energy transition, making sure this process is equitable and accessible for rural communities. And in collaboration with Flipping, we are carrying out a building electrification education module called BEAM, and this is sponsored by Sierra Club, Microsoft, Building Good, and Power Force. And really, it centers on the key theme of heating and cooling systems, of our Inflation Reduction Act consumer tax credits, providing the holistic education that is needed in order to accelerate and veer into upward mobility for residents here in Buckingham County. And according to the Department of Energy, the building sector is particularly important in this clean energy transition because energy consumption makes up for the building sector 40% of, nearly 40% of greenhouse gas emissions. So if we are to combat that and reduce our carbon emissions and meet our statewide goals for the Virginia Clean Economy Act, it's really central that we meld this holistic education alongside the technical training that a program like Flipping provides. In addition to its environmental benefits, building electrification contributes to public health, especially with adverse outcomes that young children experience as a result of reduced indoor air quality, like asthma and bronchitis and other illnesses, in addition to protecting more vulnerable populations that do not have increased comfort in their homes due to lack of retrofitting and weatherization, which is another component of the Flipping program that is included in the building electrification education module. And all in all, this program, we are in full support of Flipping because it not only meets the holistic education requirements and providing skills and knowledge for those reentering the workforce, it also acts as a tool for upward mobility that encourages all parts of the state of Virginia to veer into the clean energy transition.
So I'm going to give you guys and everyone on the board some quick facts about the state and the county of Buckingham. Our reach or impact potential, as of 2023, there are 16,728 residents in the county of Buckingham. Approximately 140 incarcerated individuals will be released directly back into Buckingham County from the Farmville Regional Jail within one year. Those people need to be trained. Those people need to prevent recidivism. Buckingham is also part of the MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area of Charlottesville. Buckingham County High School serves 573 students, per the Virginia Department of Education. We can train those students and get them involved in STEM, specifically in solar, quicker. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, it states that from 2017 to 2021, 1,797 veterans reside in Buckingham County. According to the U.S. Solar Industry Diversity Study, women represented only 26% of the solar workforce as a whole. Other gender disparities are that only 28% of women in the solar industry hold manager, director, or president-level positions. And the disparities get even more stark for women and men of color. In 2021, the median household income for Buckingham County was $49,841 compared to the state of Virginia, which was $80,615. This leaves a delta of $30,774 for Buckingham residents, or 38% less in salary. So how does Buckingham County funding Flipping's solar panel installation training and partnering with us as a municipality community-based partner benefit you all? It saves the county funds by having a trained internal workforce. Flipping is able to train your maintenance staff and other workers so that when they have projects, such as the Apex or Dominion Energy Projects, your internal personnel will be able to conduct site investigations and also cost analysis to ensure that these projects and the due diligence is done and that they are, I'll pause.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, all right. To ensure that these projects
Somebody else, I know.
Okay, are cost beneficial and also good for the county and the community itself. Partnering with Flipping as well and funding this project and this initiative supports state and national DEI or diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives. Funding Flipping's, funding Flipping's project and initiative also allows exploration of other funding opportunities for the county of Buckingham as a whole. This opens up more federal funding for Buckingham for workforce diversity. This opens up more funding and federal and state opportunities for the county of Buckingham for women in solar and women in construction industries. It also opens up more funding from DOJ, as well as for other Department of Labor opportunities. And finally, it aids in fueling the pipeline for positions in renewable energy and quality skilled workers. Thank you all for listening to our presentation, and I strongly urge you all to consider funding our project.
We'll take some of the budget tab.
Okay.
And we're on budget recalcitrant. Thank you. Thank you. Warriors First.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. How y'all doing?
Good.
Good evening.
My name is Jeremiah Williams. This is my wife, Victoria. This is Warriors First Inc. is a fully-approved nonprofit based here in Buckingham County, Virginia. Our nonprofit mission is basically to provide temporary housing and financial assistance to veterans, service members, and even law enforcement that are in need. Little bit backstory about us, how we got started, is that it's based off what happened to me. I was a veteran, served nine years, Virginia Army National Guard, just got out this past October. During my time, I was two years in, had a great job, and working at Fort Pickett, and had some hard times, came upon a hard time, got injured at basic training, and ended up losing my job. And when found out later on that was illegal, because I was out because of it. And basically, what happened was, was that I called my unit. My unit gave me all the information that they could provide. And the only one that they basically gave me, they said, you know, we can't help you. They asked me three questions, revolved around my service, my time of service. And every single time, I did not qualify. I raised my right hand to serve my country and my state. Two years, serving every single weekend, two weeks of the year, preparing, ready on call. And they said, we could not help you for any kind of assistance, every single time. And I can honestly say, I know the taste of gunmetal. I had it in my mouth. I was ready to do it. But with the grace of God, I didn't. My best friend showed up, knocked on the door, saved my life. For years, he didn't know, but he did. And that's why I started this. It's been weighing on my heart for many years. I wanted to do this. And many, a couple of years ago, I found out one of my sergeants from my unit actually killed himself in his truck. Don't know what happened to him. He had a good day with his fellow, with his colleagues, and just ended up doing it. But this is why we did it, because I was in a spot to where I was about to lose my house, lose my apartment, lose my car. I just lost my job. So I needed that assistance to help me in getting back on my feet. Now, I wasn't looking for a handout. I was looking for a hand up. That's all I wanted. I wanted somebody to provide me temporary housing if I could. And gladly, my parents took me back in. It was a long road, but I did it. And that's the point of this. We want to basically provide temporary housing for these veterans and these service members and these law enforcement and first responders. So we want to replicate this by basically providing temporary housing in micro-communities as well. And we want to heighten awareness in our area with homelessness and suicide rates. And we don't want to discriminate based on duty status. If you raise your right hand to serve our country and our state, we're not going to turn you away. We want to help you, because that's the point. We want to help with housing insecurity, unemployment, and lack of financial structure, mental health. And we want to be the barriers.
Beat the barriers.
Beat the barriers. There she goes. This is my wife. She is the VP. She is the right hand. Like I said, we want to build micro-communities in the rural areas and provide struggling warriors in necessary time and space, basically to give them an extra cushion, to help restructure their lives, get them back on track. While temporary housed, they'll undergo our programs. Basically, our programs will involve financial assistance, financial structuring classes if they need it, mental health services if they need it. We have already partnered with some organizations. One is here in support of us, Hands Up, based out of Richmond. They're in here in support of us. They also do, it's called Vet Link as well, based up there. They focus on mostly aftercare as well, and they provide a lot of other services in providing, allocating those services. So if we have a client that needs us and we can't provide it, we don't know what to do, we call our partners. And we also partnered with
Piedmont Area Veterans Council.
Thank you.
So we're aiming to be this bridge of accessibility. You know, we're looking at tiny home micro-communities of three to five units each. We're starting small. We want to focus on this county first because the need is here. As you said before, there are various barriers and risk factors, and they're greatly heightened in the rural communities. You have places like Newport News, you have Richmond, you have Charlottesville, Lynchburg, and Virginia Beach. Those are big metropolitan areas that have similar services, services of non-equal services to this. But there is this disparity where a lot of the rural communities are being neglected or don't have these resources. So we're trying to bring those services here and start a home base here in the heart of Virginia, show that Buckingham County cares about its military service members, does not discriminate based on duty status. And this isn't a thing where they're there to live permanently. While they're housed in our temporary housing units, they would be undergoing various care, various programs and care management services so that they can rebuild back structure, enter their lives, to return to the community as productive citizens.
And here's some ways we are trying to get our funding as well. We're doing grants. We're doing corporate donors. We're doing crowdfunding online, as you can see. Our team consists of five members currently right now and a lot of volunteers blended between locally and remotely.
We've greatly innovated to where we can have a remote team, buy their talent to, you know, middle-of-nowhere Virginia nonprofit like ours.
Like I said, our current partnership, Hands Up, Community Resource, Vet Link is here representing us.
Supporting us.
Supporting us. Supporting us, my fault. And Piedmont Area Veteran Council. Growing Networks, this one I want to talk about as well when we get to it, but we are growing network and support from the Department of Veteran Services. I've been on call with them constantly, and they are in great support of us in wanting this to go through.
And while we cannot, you know, disclose the identities of the residents in this county who would greatly benefit from the services that we want to support, this temporary housing initiative, et cetera, you know, they've already reached out to us saying, could you do this for so-and-so in this part of the county? Again, we cannot disclose those names. So the need is here. The need is here in this county, in the heart of Virginia.
VetNet is similar to Piedmont Area Veteran Council. And Tech for Troops is a strong endorser of us as well. I've talked to the CEO of that organization. They've even offered to donate some computers to us once we get a headquarters or anything established. Vets to Farmers, this is one of the ones I want to go into detail really quickly on. Vets to Farmers is an organization, I believe it's about five years old. It's based out of Colorado. They were just featured in the VA newsletter. And right after that newsletter came out, I spoke to the executive director personally. I gave him this idea. And after this newsletter came out, he had been flooded with emails about their organization, by veterans wanting to get involved from Virginia and want that program in Virginia. And so we're in talks right now to try and partner with them in at least a five-year program to where we can actually set up a second micro-community and get their program working with the veterans that are housed and ones in the surrounding area that want to be involved can come in and learn.
Agricultural skills, gardening, self-sustainability, things that this county is so wonderfully known for. So we're looking to kind of bring those services here too, but we'd be the host of those.
Yes. And so we're working on that. Old Hickory Buildings is one of our buildings that we're, all of the establishments that we're looking into.
In development.
In development, but we are looking into other things as well for prefab, so that way we are in compliance with the county and the state with our zoning.
Universal State Building Code.
Yes, building code.
And also zoning.
Yes.
We've already done We've already done our research on that and have spoken to the appropriate representatives of this county. We will be in compliance.
Yes, there you go. Yes, I will be. Blue Ridge Food Bank, we're working with them. We're in the process of talking with them, Wounded Warrior Project. We just talked to Buckingham Dillon Garden Club, that's in the works as well. And to be honest with you, we do have a celebrity endorsement. Ms. Stacy Dash, I don't know if y'all have ever seen the movie Clueless? Yes.
Putting Buckingham County on the map.
She has personally endorsed us. I've reached out to her, and it's in the works of her possibly, when we get going a little bit stronger, to where she could possibly come in and do some guest appearances, and do some help with some fundraising for the county itself, as well for as long as with our organization. Here's our five-year plan.
Subject to modifications.
Yeah. Yes, yes it is. Our plan basically right now is to fundraise and to solidify additional partnerships and programs. That's why I asked you ladies to say, but they didn't. Because I would like to partner with them. I liked hearing what they had to say. We want, by the beginning of next year, we want at least one unit up. And that's basically within full compliance of the county and the state. We want to run by 2025 and '26. We want to continue adding more and more. 2028, like I said, that's when we want to have the second one go up, fully running, if we can, because we know what we're going to be doing in compliance with the county. And that way we can have those units up, and we can already have that partnership building with Vets to Farmers, and call it our Veteran Community Garden Project.
So as you can see, you know, we kind of want to have the start, the first unit, maybe by mid or fiscal, end of fiscal year, 2024. And then 2025 through 2027, we'll be doing our test trials, running our services, adding more units to our, you know, this first home base, micro community, which is so needed in this county. Then 2028, that's when we really want to start amplifying the growing partnerships we have.
Our request right now is just simple, small. All we're requesting is $5,000 for our budget from you all. Not only is it small, but it's also going to be big for us, because it's going to show the support from the county towards our organization. Even a small little gesture can actually, you know, help us out, especially when we're trying to apply for grants and donations from angel donors as well, to show that our county is in support of us. And we are a brand-new organization. And that would be very beneficial to us.
And this will open the doors for our nonprofit to meet eligibility criteria. We are in discussion with our, you know, our grant writers and all of the other professionals in the funding. $5,000, to be honest, will not fund a lot, but it will get our feet through the door where we would like to be in the long run. So that's why that is that amount.
And that's my presentation, that's our presentation. And do you have any questions?
Any questions for the young man? We thank you for your presentation.
I appreciate it.
Jeremiah.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your service to our country.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do you have any questions for?
Hands up as well. Well, we thank y'all for coming. We've got no public hands, we move on to zoning matters. Ms. Emerson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this evening, we do have three introductions. The first one is Case 22 ZMA 321. The applicant and landowner is Olympia Moore. The tax map is 42 parcel 208. It does contain approximately 13.77 acres, and it's located at or near 29661 North James Madison Highway, New Canton. It is in the Marshall Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A1. The applicant is requesting rezoning from agricultural A1 to business B1 for commercial use. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. As you can see in the background and zoning information, it does discuss how this property is located very closely to the Arvonia New Canton Village Center, and it's also located on State Route 15, which is considered to be a growth corridor for our comprehensive plan. The background on this case, as far as the introduction and public hearing to the Planning Commission, is that the case was first introduced to the Planning Commission October 24th, 2022, and a request was made for a public hearing to be held at the November 28th, 2022 meeting. A motion was made by Commissioner Taylor to decline the request for a public hearing. A vote was taken, and there were three commissioners in favor of this motion and three commissioners in opposition of this motion. With a vote of a tie, the motion failed, and the public hearing was not held November 28th, 2022. The application, or the applicant, was then placed on the November 28th, 2022 agenda, requesting a public hearing to be held December 27th, 2022. Unfortunately, due to illness, the applicant was unable to attend and asked the commission to be placed on the December 27th, 2022 agenda. At the meeting held December 27th, 2022, the applicant requested a public hearing. A motion was made by Commissioner Gooden to hold a public hearing at the January 23rd, 2023 meeting. The vote was held, and three commissioners voted in favor of holding the public hearing, and four commissioners voted in opposition of holding a public hearing for this request. The applicant was placed on the January 23rd, 2023 agenda, requesting a public hearing February 27th, 2023. Commissioner Kapusinski made a motion to deny the request for a public hearing. A vote was taken, and three commissioners voted in favor of this motion, and five commissioners voted in opposition of the motion. This motion failed. Commissioner Cruz made a motion to hold a public hearing February 27th, 2023. Five commissioners voted in favor of this motion, and three commissioners voted in opposition. A public hearing was held February 27th, 2023. There were four individuals signed up to speak, three in favor of this request. Two letters submitted to the Planning Commission in favor of the request, and the chairman requested these letters read as a part of the minutes of the meeting. Commissioner Gooden made a motion to move this case to the Board of Supervisors with recommendation of approval. The vote was taken, and four commissioners voted in favor of this motion, and four commissioners voted in opposition. This case comes to the Board of Supervisors with neither a recommendation of approval or disapproval. Again, the applicant is asking for a public hearing at your next regularly scheduled April 2023 meeting. The applicant is joining us via Zoom this evening and is available for questions or concerns.
I make a motion, do we send it to a public hearing?
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Miles, this should go to a public hearing. All in favor? That's six yeses and one no, to go to a public hearing.
All right, then she'll be placed at the next April 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting at 6:00 PM for a public hearing.
All right. All right, next on the agenda, go ahead.
The next case is an introduction of 23 SUP 324. The landowner is David Stoltzvis. The applicant is Jonathan King. Property information is tax map 196 parcel 31, contains approximately 56.74 acres, and it is located at or near 13603 Franciscan Road Farmville in the Curritsville Magisterial District. The district is zoned A1. In this area, the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a private school, one-room parochial schoolhouse. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. There are 11 conditions attached to this special use permit, which are the same 11 conditions that were attached to a most recent case of this same nature and request just last year for a private schoolhouse. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission January 23rd, 2023. The Planning Commission held a public hearing February 27th, 2023. There was no one signed up to speak at the public hearing. The applicant confirmed operating hours of the school and that buses and vans would provide transportation to students not located in close proximity to the schools. Students located closely to the school would walk. Commissioner Kapusinski made a motion to recommend approval of this case to the Board of Supervisors. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this case to the board. Would it be the pleasure to hold a public hearing at the next April 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting? And the applicant is here as well to address.
Mr. Chairman, am I having a question for the applicant? Ian, what is your please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, you set a public hearing for this in April.
Sorry.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Allen, we'll set this for public hearing in April. All in favor? Seven yes, and Ms. Emerson.
And the next case for introduction is Calvin Backrack. It's 23 ZMA 325. He is the landowner and applicant. The property is located, tax map 126 parcel 11 Lot A. It does contain just over two acres, and it's located at or near 5784 Buffalo Road Dillon in the Marshall Magisterial District, zoned A1. The applicant is requesting rezoning from agricultural A1 to business B1 for commercial use, and the applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. This proposal is located within the Spouses Corner Dillon Alpha High Growth Area, an area where intense broad mixtures of land uses are to be clustered. It is located just off of State Route 15 on Buffalo Road. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission January 23rd, 2023, and a public hearing was held February 27th. One individual spoke in opposition of this request. A motion was made by Commissioner Dorrer to table this request regarding more conversation between applicant and adjacent landowner. A second was made and a vote taken. The vote in favor of this motion by three members of the Planning Commission and four voted in opposition of the motion, with one member abstaining, and this motion failed. The second motion was made by Commissioner Shoemaker to move the case to the Board of Supervisors with recommendation to approve. Five members voted in favor of this motion. This case is presented to you with a recommendation to approve, and he is requesting a public hearing at your next regularly scheduled April 2023 meeting. And Mr. Backrack is here with us this evening.
We got a motion by Supervisor Gillam, second by Supervisor Allen, that we will pass on the public hearing in April, all in favor? Seven yes.
Public hearing.
All right.
And while I have your attention, I do not have any more cases this evening for zoning, but I would like to do just a small update to let you know that the Planning Commission will be holding a work session next Monday, March 20th, at 6:00 PM here in the Peter Francisco Meeting Room in an effort to ensure that the panel of experts that will be on the agenda will address the concerns. And I know that the Planning Commission has been tasked to review options associated with possible amendments to regulate mining. So I just wanted you all to know that that work session will be held next Monday, March 20th, at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, could I get Mr. Backrack to come up with a question? I just want to clear the air on something that...
Yes, sir, Mr. Backrack, would you come to the mic, please? Your mic down.
Thank you, Mr. Backrack. I just wanted to clear the air with some questions. I've had people tell me that this is going to be a storage lot for the tow business, right? Basically? It's not going to be a junkyard, it's not going to be cars piled up on top of each other, it's just going to be a...
An auto graveyard would require M2 with a special use permit on top of it. I'm not applying for that.
I just wanted everybody to hear that it's not going to be...
It's going to look just like your impound lot next door here with a, I have to have an office, so my building will be a little nicer than the sheriff's. But I've heard the concerns of noise. No noise, it's a truck backing in and unloading. There's no more noise than would be next door here. Like I said, as far as the junk, it doesn't stack up. It's not allowed under B1 anyhow.
I've got a question for you too. I was looking at the conditions. Is there any type of privacy fence to be erected or anything?
There's no conditions. I told, talked with Pete before that everything started, and told him I was willing to go ahead and put some trees between me and the neighbor.
Pete who? Pete Kapulinski? Okay.
I said wrong. I was actually up at the neighbor's the other night on another matter, and I'm going to visit with him before the public hearing again.
Okay.
Can't see it from his house already. I'm going to plant more trees, but you cannot... There's a good bit of trees there.
Okay.
But again, I'm going to visit with him again before the public hearing, and I imagine he will be at the next public hearing. We'll see how the visit goes.
Well, it's better to be safe than sorry, you know.
Nice fella.
Yeah. I mean, anytime you can make things work with a neighbor, it's money well spent most of the time.
I think he's been fed a little disinformation that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's it, Ms. Emerson? I think I said it.
Yes, sir.
Did the board, we supposed to meet with the Planning Commission? What was she saying?
No.
After we won.
You can tell them if you want them. You're not required.
Okay, thank you. Q. Department of Agents Reports and Items on Consideration. Billing Inspection. Consider Request for a Billing Permit Refund of $31 to Mitchell &amp; Sons Service. Due to customer canceling the job, the permit was $51. There was a $20 processing fee for the billing permit on this for the refunds.
I'd move that we approve that billing permit refund, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Davis, if we approve this, are there any questions? All in favor? Six yes. Item 2, Gene Dixon Park. Consider Proposed Lease Agreement with the Buckingham County Youth League. What's the card of you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In your packet tonight, you should have a copy of the proposed new lease for the Gene Dixon Park with the Youth League. As you know, we look at that lease each year. Their season runs from March to December, so we try to sit down before March and get that lease approved. It's almost identical lease as we approved in the past two years. I will point your attention to one correction we made, and that was dealing with Page 5, Section 8, Letter H. We changed that language because we had to know kids under a certain age could be in there operating concession stand. We were told that, you know, they're short of volunteers all the time with parents, so they wanted to have kids that could be in the concession stand as long as they were supervised and providing work. So we changed that language to help them out with their volunteers. So that was the only changes we made, unless you guys have something for us tonight. So I'm asking you to approve this tonight so they can start their sports this calendar year.
All right, boy, what would you pledge?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we renewed the contract.
All right. A motion by Supervisor Gillam, second by Supervisor Matthews, that we renew this contract, all in favor? Right. Seven yes. All right. Item 3, Anna Litter, consider approbation of $6,095 received from Anna Litter Grant.
Yes, sir, I'll take that. So that is just our annual grant we received for the Anti-Litter Task Force. Tonight, I'm asking that we appropriate that Tonight, I'm asking that we appropriate that to the solid waste department, so that Mr. Hill can use that appropriately with the anti-litter task force. I'd move, Mr. Chairman, if there are no questions, to appropriate that fund.
The motion, Supervisor Miles, and second by Supervisor Matthews, that we must appropriate that money, that fund. All in favor?
All right. And the next item is me again. I have an ARPA request from the Sheriff's Office for them to put new in-car camera systems on their patrol vehicles. As it states in the letter, currently, they have four of these newer models, and they're asking to use ARPA funding to outfit the remaining vehicles in their fleet. The total request is one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. That includes all the cameras, as well as the installation estimates for those. This went through the ARPA committee, and they are recommending that we do use the ARPA fundings. What is the pleasure of the board on this matter?
I move, Mr. Chairman, to appropriate the ARPA funds in line with the recommendation from the committee.
All right, if a motion by Mr. Miles, second by Mr. Matthews, that we appropriate these funds. Are there any questions? All in favor of the motion? Seven yes. All right, listen, you got the next one?
Yeah, I'll do the next one, Mr. Chairman. In your packet also tonight, you should have a letter from the Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Stephanie Love. She has pointed out, due to recent changes in legislation, the Commissioner of Revenue Association has been working hard to streamline the transit occupancy tax and create a uniformity in with all localities in Virginia. They create a standard form to the Department of Taxation to be filled out on a monthly basis. To prevent this confusion, and for Buckingham County to be in line, she's requesting that our ordinance be changed to reflect the file on a monthly basis. So right now, we're doing it on a quarterly basis. She's asking for us to change our ordinance to a monthly basis, to be aligned with the state. So I'm asking tonight if you guys set a public hearing next month, so we can have a, and possibly change our ordinance.
Don't move.
Second.
Make a public hearing. Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Davis, that we will set a public hearing next month to discuss this matter. Are there any questions? All in favor? Okay. We got a request from the Buckingham Farm Bureau, request to use the auditorium in the current administration building on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, from seven to nine, to hold a candidate forum for the two thousand twenty-three Board of Supervisors election. What is the board pledge on that?
I also move, Mr. Chairman, that we grant the request.
Second. Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Gillum, we would grant this request from the Farm Bureau. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes, okay. Economic Development Committee update, Supervisor Miles.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So the Economic Development Committee met on last week to continue discussions with regards to our, the tasks that the Board of Supervisors recently handed down to that committee, and that was to seek out ways of marketing in terms of what the Board of Supervisors, by way of the committee suggestions and recommendations, would like to see in that space, would like to see on that land. And we have had a few meetings. One, one note of two to bring up is that the members of the Economic Development Committee and my fellow co-chair Supervisor Matthews can expand on this, or staff if necessary, but the majority of the committee did want to see if the county Board of Supervisors would agree to an appraisal of the land in terms of knowing the value or the lack of value there, too. So that's a simple request. They want to know, the committee would like to know the value of obviously the land, the timber, and what's there, so, and have value on it, to know where to continue to go. So I'll leave it right there.
Matthew, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll touch on it a little bit. You know, I'm trying to keep an open mind about this task that the finance, or the Economic Development Committee has. We've got a lot of good people on there, and there's a couple of things. Number one, the marketing of this piece of property and what's in the best interest of the seventeen thousand citizens that this is going to affect. And, you know, we've got some good ideas coming up, but I do think it is important to find the value of that piece of property, not just for the committee, but for our board, to understand what it might be worth. So, and also, a simple thing of just putting up a sign that we are marketing this piece of property. I think that was something else that we had discussed at our economic development.
That's right, I was going to touch on that, but that's good, you're.
That Mr. Steger, which is one of our members of the Economic Development Committee, had recommended, so that's a pretty easy fix. It's not going to be a whole lot of money involved. There is going to be an expense on a, on an appraisal of this piece of property, but we think it's going to be a good thing. And I'm trying to keep an open mind about it and look at all the avenues that are available to the county and to the citizens, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could add, Mr. Carter, what was it? We did say that we had sort of a ballpark, depending on the, our fiscal policy of not having to put it at for bid, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I think it's about twenty thousand dollars. If I can do those myself and not get board approval, if it goes above that amount, I need to get a board approval, and we do the RFP process.
And the money, perhaps, Mr. Carter, could come from the Economic Development Fund that we have.
Yes, you all in the past have saved, you know, land sales and put it toward Economic Development, so it could come out that part of money if you choose to do it.
We have almost seven hundred thousand.
Right, it's, there's a lot of money in there. And then, as Supervisor Matthews noted, the committee did want to see if a sign for marketing could be put out with somewhat of a description of the parcels or parcels, is that right, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes. Just, you know, for people that are riding through the county, you never know who you might see, you know, so, what they might see.
I'd offer a motion to that effect, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, give a second. The motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Brandt, that we will grant this. All in favor of the motion?
I've got one other thing.
Yes, sir.
To address that.
Yes, sir.
There was some documentation that was being asked for by some of the members of the Economic Development Committee, and Ms. Emerson, you were going to try to gather that information. You had any success with doing that with the water and sewer and, was there anything else?
Capacity per day for sewer.
Flood map, too. A flood, flood map, too.
Yes, oh, yeah, no, wetlands.
Wetlands, sorry, wetlands, water, sorry. And then, Mr. Chairman, I know that the, that the board voted several meetings ago that that report would be due to the board by the April meeting, and because of the discussions, which are really good, and our meetings will, there is going to be a need to continue to meet for estimated probably another six months. So just to be clear, we're, the committee won't be able to meet that April deadline, and I just want to be transparent about that, that that's the case right now. So we're looking at maybe another six months and gathering data, talking to potential parties that are interested in the property. And of course, the board would have the final stamp on everything, just suggestions and recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Attorney, Mattis.
Chairman, members of the board, I have just one minor item tonight. I left at your desk something entitled Resolution. Those of you may remember that on December of twenty-twenty-one, you approved the resolution. You agreed to participate in the Virginia OPR Settlement Act. At that time, there were several, several people involved in that settlement. Since that time, there have been negotiations with other individuals, and they have now been included in that potential settlement. The resolution calls for you to agree to still participate and add the due parties to that, so I'd ask for the adoption of the resolution, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have first. I will point out that money has begun to come in from that settlement. We've probably gotten about, how much? Twenty thousand dollars already, and these will add some more people to that, will generate some more money. It would be the pleasure, I'd ask that you adopt.
Any questions for the attorney on this matter? Ian, we need a motion, I'm sorry, go ahead. Got a motion by Supervisor Matthews, second by Supervisor Gillum, we adopt this resolution. All in favor? Thank you, sir. All the board, Mattis.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing. We have some really great things to celebrate in this county, and one of which are our young people in terms of what's going on in our public schools and all schools, to be, to be frank with you, but after a very successful twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two season, which saw the Buckingham Knights Scholastic Bowl team, led by Captain Chance Woodson, finish second overall at the Virginia High School League State Tournament, this current school year, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three team was even better. Buckingham started by sweeping the James River Regular District, the, I'm sorry, the James River District Regular Season with a fifteen-to-zero record. At the two-B Regionals at Page County, they beat out Stewart's Draft before falling to, before falling to Clark County. And after the Knights rallied to beat Mountain View, Stewart's Draft had an upset, dramatic upset over Clark County that opened the door for Buckingham to beat and host Page County to advance to the state's championships. And in short, the team defeated Gretna, outlasted Pacoason, then finished the March of Destiny by cruising by Richlands by a score of two-ten to one forty-five. At any rate, this is the Knights' first Scholastic Bowl title and is the only state title in any sport for Buckingham County, the other being in nineteen seventy-five by boys' basketball. I don't remember that because I wasn't around. But anyway, the team members include Chance Woodson, the captain, Courtney Aggie, William Payne, Justin Steger, Kyra Johnson, Albert Young, and Luke Freeman, and their coaches, Ryan Peedy. So I would offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt a resolution in their honor to celebrate their successes, and we have them at the April meeting, sir.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Davis, that we adopt a resolution in their honor. Are there any questions?
I'd like to see, give them some kind of a certificate of appreciation.
Yeah, we can do that.
For what they've done, what they've done, a bang-up job. They're going to Alabama in May to compete, compete nationally, so that's a real good thing, I'll tell you.
It's a big thing.
We can take care of that.
Big thing for the county.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Bryant, we'll take your certificate for that. Seven yes, all right. End of board, remember.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't get to do the county administrator's report, which I don't have much, but just to make sure you're aware. Last week, so you've noticed that Route fifty-six site has started to concrete, that's been approved for, so it started last Tuesday, so hopefully by the end of next week, that site will be finished in concrete, so a lot of the requests, complaints Mr. Bryant was getting about the potholes and white dirt will be going away after next week. Looking good. Also, as a citizen said earlier, the construction in front of the Ag Center has started, we're putting that handicap ramp right in front of the door. As she pointed out before, the handicap ramp was, handicap ramp was kind of up above the hill, so a person had to park at the top of the hill, come down the ramp, just get to the front door, so we're putting that ramp right in front of the door, so now a person can pull up to that door and let a person out, and they can be into the building with no problems. And Scott mentioned to you guys earlier during his V-DOT report, the speed reader signs that you guys requested for the courthouse area, we're pretty close to having that wrapped up, so once we get the final approval from V-DOT, we send to them, we should be able to put those up and no problem, and that's all.
Okay.
Carl, I'm looking forward to getting all on your side.
We bringing the budget down?
I got a question for you, Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir.
Is Shorty Kidd doing the concrete work up there?
Yes.
Did you work out a payment plan with him?
Yes, we're going to do a payment plan.
So he can get that.
Yes, sir. We're going to do a lot of it after this pour he did, but then we're going to hold it to some of the remaining funds for when it passes that hardest test.
Hardest test.
Yep.
End of board, remember, hand the thing, I'll bring for the board before we recess to Ravine on Wednesday, March the twenty-two, twenty-three at six P.M. Ian, so the recess.